At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Like to welcome everyone to this meeting because we are still operating under the emergency operations resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting is originating from the Merit Center Emergency Operations Center, and the majority of the council is connected via distance, so I will call on City Clerk Kyle Box to take the roll call.
Mayor Burns.
Here.
Craig Schaefer.
Here.
Steve Meister.
Here.
Glenn Baricola.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lazzinski.
Here.
And the motion does pass. We do have an agenda before us. Excuse me, the, we do have a full attendance. We have a agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, the first item then would be the introduction of the Green Corps members. I'll ask Preston Stensrud, our Park Superintendent, to make this introduction.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The night is here, I'm here to introduce Kelly Herpendahl with the Minnesota Green Corps Program. I was hoping to do this when we were back to an all-person, in-person meeting, so we kind of held off, and then we just kind of figured we should probably just do it, because we don't know when that'll happen, so. We, the city has been a Minnesota Green Corps member before. It's been several years. John and Bobby, you guys might remember, but I want to say it's by three or four. I've never been personally involved with Bellunder, Harry, I believe, and maybe some other city staff, but back on March 10th, we brought an application request to be a host site through the MPCA to get a Green Step member, and we were approved. Kelly started on September 21st, and she'll be with us for approximately seventeen hundred working hours or sometime into the middle, end of July into August. We're working on main focus of just tree stuff, and I'll let her kind of touch base on what she's been doing so far this spring when the trees, or this fall when the trees still had leaves on, and then we're kind of doing some other projects through the winter until the leaves have came back on the trees this spring, and we'll get back into doing the inventory. But big focus on getting some planning done and preparing for Emerald Ash Four. So there'll likely be more stuff coming to you guys for review or maybe approval. We need to get in some kind of a actual record, otherwise it might just more so be like a policy type thing for the city similar to Dutch disease. So without further ado, I will let Kelly take over, and if you have questions, feel free to ask.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Welcome, Kelly, and we invite you to give a short introduction and a little bit about what you're doing, so welcome.
Thank you. Yes, as Preston said, I'm Kelly. I'm the Green Corps member serving here. Some of the main projects I've been working on have been the city's tree inventory. So in the fall, I completed the main areas, so like public parks and other public areas, like the fire hall and the public schools, so I inventoried four thousand and three trees. With those, I put those into the spreadsheets, and we calculated some of the species numbers to see what we have here. So one of the things I was working on was calculating how many ash trees we have. So we have, so far, I counted seven hundred and forty-four, which made up about twenty percent of the inventory. So another thing I was working on was Emerald Ash Four research. Today, I worked on an ash tree replacement plan and worked up a draft for that, some other infographics as well. And then I have other, otherwise, besides forestry projects, I've been working on like researching the possibility of a rain garden or a pollinator plot and things like that, and also preparing for other community events like Arbor Day and possibly a Community Cleanup Day as well.
Thank you, and where are you from?
I'm from Mankato.
Very good. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you, Preston.
Yep, thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move then to Agenda Item Number Three. This will be consider the approval of the minutes of the regular City Council meeting that was held on December 8th. The council does have those minutes in their packet. Are there any corrections? If not, is there a motion for the approval of those minutes? Seconded by Russ, seconded by John to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to the next item, which would be the items on the consent agenda. We'll bring the items up on the screen that are on the consent agenda this evening. And they include the approval of the employee retirement resolutions, consider the approval of the 2020 workers' compensation insurance, consider the transfer of funds to establish the EDA Response Fund to the impacted establishments, call for a public hearing regarding the proposed property tax abatement at 500 Elizabeth Street, consider the approval of the resolutions authorizing the transfer enclosure of the capital project for, on 456 and 493, consider the resolution authorizing an inter-fund loan for the advance of certain costs in connection with the tax increment financing District Two-Dash-Two, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from Fund 256 to the Special Revenue Fund 258, also the wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. We have a payment invoice to Bolton and Mink Incorporated. And then finally, on the consent agenda, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of a separate discussion? If not.
Eight and ten.
Eight and ten. Other items?
Number five.
Any other items? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items?
So move.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Steve. Discussion? There's no discussion. We'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to Agenda Item Number Five. Consider the approval of the 2020 workers' comp insurance. Jim, you have a question?
I didn't have a question. I just wanted to pull this because if people understand workers' comp, they have a moderate of point six. An average moderate is one point oh. So they have a moderate of a point six, the compliment to our employees and how they go about their work, and I just wanted to publicly compliment them, because that saves the city a tremendous amount of money having that law of a moderate not a workers' comp. So that's just, I want to give credit to the employees to give credit where credit is due, and they're doing a good job. I, as a council member, appreciate that, so I make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Jim. Motion by Jim. Is there a second? Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eight, consider the approval of the resolutions authorizing the transfer enclosure of capital funds 456 and 493. Is Annette on the, connected with this meeting? Okay, Glenn, you have a question?
My question is with regard to Fund Number 493, if you could turn to that page. The, it's my understanding that the money for this project is restricted funds and can only be used for the Merit Center Track Project, and I talked to Carl this afternoon, and it's my understanding that there won't be any funds left in Capital Products 493. And, and Capital Products Fund Number 401, I believe, is the equipment fund. And so I'm wondering if we shouldn't leave out sentence number one and just go with sentence number two, that the Capital Products Fund 493 be closed.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can, Annette. This is a net stormer.
Yep, yep, and that, that is a great point, Glenn. I simply put in the Fund 401 in there in case there was a small balance for some reason. That way, we could easily close the fund and have the authority to do so, but in all reality, there shouldn't be any funds remaining, so I don't have a problem if you want to take that out.
That would be my recommendation. And if that's, if that would be changed, I would approve, I would make a motion to approve the resolutions, both of them.
I'll second that.
Motion by Glenn, seconded by Craig for the resolution without item number one, with, with that being, that sentence being deleted. Discussion on the motion. If not, we'll move to a vote on that. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion passes. Agenda Item Number Ten, consider the approval of the resolution authorizing transfer of funds from 256, Fund 256 to the Special Revenue Fund 258. Glenn, similar question here? Glenn?
Muted.
I believe you're muted, Glenn.
Yeah, I'm here. I guess my concern is that the Special Revenue Fund, find my notes here a second. I, I believe that Fund Number 256 has both sales tax and food and beverage taxes in it, and the sales tax money is used for construction purposes and equipment for the Red Baron Arena and the Merit Center, whereas the food and beverage tax is used for operating expenses. And so I'm wondering here, since both types of funds are, both the sales tax and the food and beverage taxes are in the same fund, if we shouldn't indicate that the money being transferred is the food and beverage tax funds? Because this would be an improper, I think, use of the sales tax money.
Sharon, you?
Correct. The, the funds would come from the food, beverage, and lodging as the sales tax is restricted, so it's, it's been simply change the amount that is restricted for food, beverage, and lodging at the end of the year and not the sales tax. We can definitely add in that clarifier if you would prefer that.
That would be my recommendation, yes. Thank you.
Is that a motion, Glenn?
Yes, I like that motion. Thank you.
Motion by Glenn. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Baricola.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities update with us representing the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities this evening is Marty Seifert, and he'll make a short presentation. Sharon, you want to make any other introductory remarks?
No, we normally have had Marty on a little bit earlier, but we weren't able to do that until tonight, so he did have some updated handouts that he, we did email you earlier today, and he is our lobbyist with the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, so Marty.
Very good. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Marty Seifert. I'm a resident of Marshall, but I work for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities amongst others through the firm of Flaherty and Hood in St. Paul, and the coalition is made up of now one hundred and six cities. When I started, it was ninety. So we just added Sartell here not too long ago again, and so we are growing. We only represent rural Minnesota, rural Minnesota issues for city government. There are unique issues that we face versus the league. We have, you know, local government aid is obviously an issue for rural cities. Cities like Shoreview, Minnetonka do not get, Woodbury do not get local government aid. Transportation is much more about farm-to-market roads and city street funding versus some of the kind of mass transit and trains and things of that nature. And in, in regard to some of the more controversial issues like environmental regulation, we tend to push back a little harder on Minnesota Pollution Control Agency and others that tend to make our infrastructure more expensive, and so we monitor regulatory issues quite closely and challenge those when we feel it's warranted. As the handout in front of you states, there are board of directors, which is made up mainly of mayors and members of city councils, focused their legislative priorities for 2021 as follows. Once again, ensure local government aid gets paid at levels currently in law for the next biennium. As you may have heard, there was a $2.4 billion deficit that was announced in a budget update last May. That has since switched over to a surplus of about six hundred and some million. A lot of that is due, well, there's a variety of factors. If any of you looked at the budget forecast, we do not tax services as heavily in Minnesota as other states. We tax goods, and there are a lot of people buying a lot of things, but not using as many services, and so we're collecting taxes at a pretty healthy clip in that regard. And then on the expenditure side, there's things like K-12 education where students' families are voluntarily dropping out of the public system and moving either over to homeschooling or private or parochial schools, and so the per pupil funding is not being released to the school districts because the students are no longer being educated by the school district, and so we kind of have some money on the savings side and some money on the revenue side that are coming in and erased the in-biennium deficit that was scheduled, that's scheduled to end on June 30th of 2021. The bad news is that there is still a one-plus-billion-dollar deficit that is scheduled for the next biennium, which starts July 1st of 2021, so the reason that you see the checkmark with InsureLGA gets paid, you know, on time and at levels in current laws, that we want to make sure that cities have a stable revenue source in which to rely upon, because your budgets and your levies and your contracts and all those types of things are really dependent on that. We are going to advance discussion about adding inflation and population growth to the LG appropriation, but at, at the end of the day, you know, I think that that may be optimistic if we do have a deficit in, in the future. You can see the other items we have. There's some COVID-19 ideas that we have put forward, environment, you know, the PFA is always in need of money for these various infrastructure projects. Marshall was a beneficiary of that last year, as you might remember. Those are paid for out of bond funds, and they're not paying for everybody's infrastructure in terms of a hundred percent cost. It's, it's a cost-share program. We also have a PFAS fund strategy that we're working on. That's kind of this forever chemicals that are very difficult to get out of the water. And then also chloride is another issue. We feel that if we can keep some of these things out of the water streams and so forth, then, you know, the cities don't end up having to pay for it later. Childcare, there's a variety of issues related to that with both money and licensure issues. The next one tackling our housing challenges, there's a variety of issues that, that we're facing with housing right now. We have had a little bit of a quarrel sometimes with some of the advocates, because workforce housing tends to be a bigger issue in, in cities, and they focus a lot of times on low-income housing, and there's a very big difference. On transportation, we also have a, kind of a proposal for city street funding for cities of both sizes. The Constitution does not allow cities under 5,000 to get any of the gas tax revenue under the current formula. You'd have to amend the Constitution in order to provide for that. Now, Marshall doesn't fall into that problem, but pretty much every city in southwest Minnesota, other than Redwood Falls, Marshall, Worthington, Wilmer, and New Ulm, get zero street funding because of how convoluted our formula is. And then, of course, supporting reforms and, and funding the Corridors of Commerce Program, which has been very important for highways like 23 and 14 to keep us connected to the rest of the state. I think some of you saw that there was proposals two years ago that gave all of the money kind of to the edge of the metro area or in the metro. Corridors of Commerce Program was essentially established and was, our firm helped write the program to make sure that rural Minnesota got a fair shake of that transportation dollar, so those are the things we're facing in the future. Just to cover last session, largely status quo because of the pandemic, there wasn't a lot of time for legislating. The bonding bill passed late, so that was passed in the fall right before the election. Most of it was focused on beef, basic infrastructure like roads, bridges, sewer, water, and things of that nature. There wasn't a lot of room for pork and, and special projects this year. They tried to keep it on the bread and butter issues, so that's kind of the basic update. I'll stand for any questions that you might have.
Questions? Marty, I need to ask you a little bit more detail on your housing challenges. Your third bullet point. Is there a particular item in there, or is there something you could send me a little bit more detail?
Yeah, that committee is working on that, John, and I can have, I'll make a note of that. I'll have Julie send you some of the specifics on, on what they've been working on. There's, you know, these housing trust funds, they're trying to find out how much money that we can afford for all these different things, too. There is, the, the, the bottom checkmark, I think, is more policy-related, because there are certain programs in the housing budget that basically send the money to the metro area, Minneapolis-St. Paul in particular, and there's just not a lot of equity for rural Minnesota. We pay all these taxes and, and many times, we don't see the return in some of these particular areas, so. We did have a housing tax credit proposal at one time. It didn't really go anywhere, so we're trying to look at just working with what, what programs we have now and making it more effective than just starting a new one.
Just a couple of things on that, not to dwell on it too long, but you know, I know at least for the last two years, the projects Minnesota housing has had has been pretty carefully split, fifty percent metro and fifty percent greater Minnesota. Tax credits, there are a number of things on that that would be good to discuss, primarily actually some difficulties created by the legislature, so in trying to move some of those, like 29 million this past year, and and then just the kind of a hesitation in making it more difficult for cities that do have some ability to do tax credits and merging those with other cities, so, yeah, there's a couple of things there that would be good to cover a little bit more intently.
Okay, thank you, John, for the question. Any other questions? Marty, on the, the second bullet under transportation, where it talks about interregional highway expansion programs, maybe you can expound on that a bit, and specifically on, you know, is the coalition's position just to support other proposals that might be coming forward? Or, you know, is, in full disclosure, does your firm need to stay away from advocating for a predictor interregional corridor because of private contract representation for perhaps like Highway 14 coalition?
Yeah, that's a good question. Shane Zart in our office handles transportation mainly, but we have been putting together ideas and proposals to make sure what happened a couple of years ago never happens again, where that money is boxed in to the metro. We've been a little confounded in finding language we can get everybody agree to. Highway 14 doesn't pose a conflict with anything mainly because the last segment was funded. They didn't get a lot done last session, but Highway 14 did pass. What they did is they took federal transportation loan money, and they dedicated some transportation-related fees to help pay that loan back, and that will complete the last segment from Nicollet, Minnesota to New Ulm, Minnesota. So once that is done, Highway 14, in terms of the coalition's goal, and our firm has represented them for well over twenty-five years, and we did segments of, you know, Rochester to Dodge Center to Oatana, to Wasika, to Janesville, to Mankato, to Nicollet. And so every, you know, every couple of years, we've lobbied very aggressively to get a segment done here and a segment done there. So the last segment now has been passed, and so I'm guessing they will stay as a coalition for some minor issues, but in terms of the four-laning issue, you know, that's the issue with lobbying firm. When you're successful, your issue goes away. We, we actually got Highway 14 funded over decades' time from Rochester to New Ulm. I know it was a long time coming, but so, long story short, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're putting that language together to try to do what we can to make sure that money gets pushed out to, to roads like 23, 212, 371, Highway 2, you know, those, those interregional corridors that, that really kind of, let's be honest, they, they fall within the boundaries of the cities that we represent. So they, they connect your, you know, your Granite Falls to Marshall to Wilmer, they connect your other cities from here to there, mainly, you know, Highway 60 and such, and such, so a lot of those just kind of happen to, to fall together, that our coalition tends to be the regional centers and the county seats, and so it kind of works out nicely that way.
Say, Marty, quick question related to the Highway 14 project. I know that, that New Ulm to, to Nicollet is going to get finished now, but did that also include that segment by Claremont, basically Oatana East to Dodge Center?
That is supposed to be scheduled for this year, I believe. Yep, so Highway 14 is supposed to be seamless. Of course, New Ulm, you know, let's be real, there's a lot of engineering. If any of you drive, I know how many of you drive from like New Ulm to Cortland to Nicollet, but there's a lot of engineering that's got to take place there yet, so that, that's going to be a couple of years before that actually gets fully developed, but that other one is, is going to be first. That's scheduled for this year.
Perfect, thank you.
If not, thank you, Marty. We look forward to continuing communication, especially during the session, so, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
We'll move then to Agenda Item Number 14. This will be consider the acceptance of donations to the Parks Department for fiscal year 2020. I'll call once again on Preston Stensrud, Park Superintendent. The council does have the, the summary of the donations before you also, so Preston, you may want to make any comments or open yourself up for questions.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Like we do annually, kind of towards the end of the year, just bringing forward the donations that we had to the parks and the arena. And then we'll touch base on the Archery Park and Veterans Memorial, Memorial Park at the very end. So I'll just kind of go through them and kind of mention what they're for, in case you guys aren't aware, so. These are in no particular order. Marshall Area Hockey Association gave the city $2,500 for the installation of heaters at the scores areas in the Reinhardt Rink and Lockwood Rink. So basically, where you do all the scoring and where the ref comes over. Rink. Um, so basically where you do all the scoring and where the ref comes over, um, the, the people that were doing those and keeping the stats found that their feet were really cold because you're literally right on the ice. Um, so Maha bought some big commercial grade heaters, um, and paid for them and then basically just gave them to us as a kind of an amenity upgrade, um, for running their tournaments and stuff. Sitting there for a game isn't so bad, but when you're sitting there all day, it's a different story. So, um, likewise Coleman Electric with the heaters there, they did all the install. We had to run new circuitry, um, conduit, full wire. Um, then Brad put those on timers, um, so they don't end up staying on after, you know, somebody leaves and get left on and run all night long. Um, so he did all the install, bought all the materials and then donated it the entire um, work done for that. Um, so about a four thousand dollar total just for the heaters and pulling the electrical and stuff like that. Now the Marshall Area Youth Baseball Association gave the city thirty-eight hundred dollars, purchase and install their custom bat and helmet racks that are out at the dugouts at Independence. Um, get used um, all the time. We've never had it. So all the bats were laying on the ground and the helmets were getting beat up from hitting the cement in the dugouts. Um, so they had bend rate, um, design. Um, like I said, these custom stands are power coated. Um, they're really big and heavy and they'll last a long time. So they, they picked up the total purchase on that. All we did was install them. So, um, the friends of the Strutman family, um, an amount of four thousand dollars. Um, there's a custom-made picnic table that is now at Boards and Boyd Skate Park. Um, you guys haven't seen it, I recommend check it out. It's pretty unique and something you won't see anywhere else. Um, Honoring Aaron, um, he actually used to work for us in the parks. Um, but the tables um, designed like a skateboard. Um, it's got little wheels on it and then they have a graffiti artist come and graffiti and clear coat the table, um, made out of action track chair and then um, just gave it to us to install. So, um, very unique piece, Honoring Aaron. Uh, Marshall United Soccer Association gave the city five thousand dollars to purchase three sets of portable goals, um, two sets replaced at the old softball complex on Channel Parkway and one sets out at Patriot Park. Um, that was kind of a, the start of a joint partnership. Um, they're looking to um, build collaboration with the city and um, for short on soccer fields. And um, our goal is to now start converting fields three and four, the two north fields towards US Bank, but we taking all that fencing down and um, just picking that into green space for soccer. Um, so it's kind of the start of that. The city did. Um, I think the total for those three sets was eight thousand. So we, we paid three thousand out of the parks budget to kind of start that um, partnership. Um, D and G Excavating, a thousand dollars for dirt work done around Carter's Court. This one um, was actually from last summer. I just thought that I had uh, included it when we did the Carter's Court recognition and acceptance of donation from them. So Timberwolves, um, but I omitted it and by accident and um, just told D and G that we would get that squared away on the next time we did the donations. Um, and that's likewise on the US Bank. Um, basically we raised that whole court to twelve inches and that paid for all the fill and gravel and, and uh, so at the end, we've got a better surface, um, doesn't sit underwater and there's no costs to the city. Um, it's just part of a partnership there. Um, also this year we um, did the um, installation and opening up the archery park, um, right behind the merit center here. That's been a huge hit. Um, about half of the uh, um, targets are actually like shot because there's so many arrows through them. So we got more coming for next year. Um, we had over ten thousand five hundred dollars in donations. Some was cash donations, some's in kind. Um, so a little bit of everything there, but lots of collaboration. Um, and thanks to Ty Brower for uh, kind of initiating that and keeping the ball rolling and uh, adding a new amenity to Marshall. And like I said, it's been a big hit. So we just took the targets down last week. So they gotta, probably won't get that long use um, in the next winter falls, but we'll see what happens. So, um, and then the Veterans Memorial and Memorial Park, um, the donations keep coming in. We already did a second brick order. Um, and those bricks are here and uh, we have a couple more ordered. We just got some more checks for donations yesterday. Um, but we're over two hundred and fifty thousand in donations. Um, and that's um, mainly just kind of in cash donations. I'm estimating we have forty to fifty thousand more and in kind. Um, like Adam Hess and Hess Concrete did their concrete bill and took twelve thousand dollars off the bill when we figured out the final tab um, that we owed them. Um, during the nursery gave us forty percent off all the plant material. D and G donated like fifteen hundred dollars worth of gravel. So just lots of odds and ends here that add up to a substantial amount of money. Um, I believe we're, our total cost to finish where we're at now is about one ninety-seven. So it came far under where we were thinking. Um, so this winter we'll be looking to come up with stuff to add and the next spring and summer we'll add to the park yet to make sure to utilize those funds there. So, um, without that, it's, we'd like to say thanks to everyone for supporting the parks and the city and making our amenities better. So I'll take, glad to take any questions if there are any.
So, open up for any questions. I would start off by just saying that a question, but the uh, first off, thank you for, uh, sincere thank you from the city goes to, out to all of the donors and uh, um, year to be commended also Preston for your um, advocacy and uh, promoting projects that people really want to get behind and, and uh, all these projects represent that. And as you mentioned, the archery park, we all know about the Veterans Memorial, how, you know, um, you, how many people are visiting that. And even um, in December, while we're almost at Christmas, but Carter's Court has been busy almost every afternoon and evening, you know, this month. So.
Yep. No, it's, it's great. Um, additions to the city that maybe wouldn't happen otherwise. So it's just uh, nice to see those and see them getting used on top of it.
Right. Any other input from the council?
Just like to echo excellent, excellent job Preston to you and all of your folks and all the volunteers and people that contributed to that. We've, we can certainly be proud of our parks.
Thank you and thank you, Preston. We'll move then to Agenda I have number fifteen. This is a request for a conditional use permit for a hundred and thirty-nine foot tower. Um, let me back up a little bit. The, is there a motion uh, for the acceptance of the donations for the Parks Department for FY twenty twenty?
Slow moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yep.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Now we'll move to Agenda I have number fifteen. This is a conditional use permit for a hundred and thirty-nine foot communication tower. Um, is Ilya uh, participating in this meeting?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Um, I'll call on Ilya Gutman to uh, present this uh, recommendation from the planning commission.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. This is a request by the Verizon Wireless to build a wireless communication tower taller than the wall by the city ordinance. The proposed tower is about one hundred and thirty-nine feet tall and it is located in I two, the general industrial district. The ordinance permits towers up to seventy-five feet tall in the district. So all towers higher than seventy-five feet require a conditionless permit. Uh, the towers uh, and antennas are described in Article six of another regulations and uh, the staff went through that thing and it looks like it complies with all the requirements of that, that regulations. Uh, so uh, it went through the planning commission and the recommendation was to improve this, the condition was permitted. So that's the recommendation of both staff and the, and the planning commission.
Thank you, Ilya. Are there any questions on this uh, recommendation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just one question. Ilya, there's, and I was trying to get up Google Earth. There's no conflict with our approach ways to the airport on this, is there?
No, no, we checked on that. And one of the, one of the conditions also that they have to comply with FAA regulations. So they uh, will have that uh, confirmation, but Jason actually checked and that there is no conflict.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, is there a motion on this recommendation?
I move to approve.
Motion by uh, motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
Yes.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Agenda I have number sixteen is uh, Project Z nine six. This is a C Street to Southview Drive proposed bike trail project. The two actions we have before us this evening, one is to consider the resolution authorizing um, the sponsoring agency for the transportation alternatives project. And then the second recommendation was the resolution identifying the responsible operation and maintenance in transportation for the, the transportation alternative uh, project. So this is a, a step in the process in the application. So with that, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you may remember we, we um, came before the council and I think it was late October to discuss this project with the council and gauge interest on making an application for a grant. Um, now we're back in front of the council here with the completed application and uh, requesting some resolutions of uh, of support. You know, one essentially, as you mentioned, outlines that the city would be the responsible party for uh, accepting the grant funds and administering a project uh, in compliance with all the requirements. And the other resolution just identifies that the city would be responsible for maintaining and operating the trail and we, that we would continue to do so. Uh, you're looking at an exhibit in front of you that identifies the proposed route, uh, tentative proposed route of the trail, starting up at C Street and uh, following southeasterly down to Southview Drive and then heading over to uh, Main Street. Um, this is a, from, from what I understand, this has been a link in our system that's been discussed for many years, certainly predates my time in Marshall. But um, we think that this is a, a good time to pursue this opportunity. Um, with the council's blessing, we would, we would keep going forward and submit our full application. Uh, the cost estimate for this is um, a hundred and seventeen, about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars of city participation, but some of that is more of an in-kind uh, contribution with engineering fees. Right now, our estimate is actually fifty-two thousand dollars in cash construction cost to the project. The school district would participate in an amount of uh, with an amount of about thirty-one thousand dollars. Uh, we view this as a good partnership project and if we're able to be awarded a grant in twenty twenty-five, we think that this would be a, a really good project. Uh, if there's any questions, I can, I can certainly answer them.
Thank you, Jason. I think it's also, as you pointed out, important to note, this is a, a, you know, a step in the application process and we're still in the application process. There's been no award, there's been no commitment on accepting the uh, should we be awarded. Um, and the other point you made is that if it would be awarded, this is a twenty twenty-five project. So, so it's uh, four plus years in the future. So with that, uh, any questions for Jason?
Uh, Jason? All future maintenance would be done by the city then?
That, that's correct. We would be responsible for it ultimately and we would consider this as part of our trail system.
And, and then part of that is going, the trail is going to the new elementary school?
Right. There's that, that spur that you see going to the elementary school. In our cost estimate, the school district is paying for that in its entirety and we would expect that they would move the snow on that.
That was my question about the snow removal because it services primarily the school there and, and it's on their property too. So, um, okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Jason? If not, um, Kyle, as a procedural thing, we have two resolutions. Do we need separate motions on, or can that be handled in one resolution or one motion?
Uh, this particular could be done in one, one motion.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion for uh, both resolutions?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebat?
No.
Kim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Agenda I have number seventeen is consider the resolution amending the resolution establishing and providing for the city of Marshall special assessment policy. Jason, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this has been a, a long time coming, I think. This, this really comes from around the twenty eighteen time period when there was some concerns over our commercial industrial street assessment rates. Um, on a project at that time, we ended up negotiating assessments and we used a method that, um, a method of kind of creating a capped assessment for those properties. And in making the revisions to this policy, we tried to utilize some of that work that was done at that time and put it into policy form. Um, so we, we've held numerous meetings on this. Uh, Councilman Bearco has put a lot of effort into it personally as well. Um, it's come a long way and we've, we've made some revisions now that we think will help make our commercial and industrial assessments more reasonable. And that's really what this is about. Uh, I probably won't go through everything in as great as detail as we did at committee where we went kind of page by page. Um, but we can certainly discuss any questions that the council has on this. And I would maybe just highlight some of the major changes and uh, those being how we treat driveways in the policy and then the uh, the street assessment portion of the policy. Um, right now, we've got it written that driveway costs would be participated with uh, by the city up to twelve feet of width on residential driveways. So if you've got a twenty-four foot driveway, we're covering half. If you've got a thirty-six foot driveway, we're still covering twelve. Um, the, the take on that is that the city is doing a project that's disrupting your access and we are willing to provide you with what we consider a minimum access back as compensation for that. If you've got a fifty-foot driveway, the taxpayers aren't going to split that cost. So that's kind of the, the brainchild of that. Um, that is open to discussion if the council would like to go back to the old concept of a fifty-fifty cost split regardless. Um, that, that was discussed at committee and um, we can certainly do that. The other portion of the policy that was uh, kind of a bigger change is how we handle industrial and commercial street assessments. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we tried to use some of the practice that we used on a prior, the prior projects in twenty eighteen. Um, so you have the actual cost that can be assessed of the project and you go through this, this steps process. There's the actual cost and then there's either the fixed frontage amount or the fixed parcel amount. And there's a formula uh, attributed to each. So what we're trying to do is just establish a maximum that is somewhat reasonable as we're coming up with these assessments and we don't, uh, we want to minimize our risk of, of ending up in court and spending a lot more money. Um, our changes were not reviewed by the city attorney at time of uh, publication in the packet. So I would also defer to him if he had any comments as well.
You have any comments? No, this does address the process that we use for the industrial commercial properties then. And I think it is a good policy to take into account street width, street thickness as some of the components to factor into an assessment. So, and as Jason said, a lot of time, effort and mathematical computations have gone into this formula. And I guess I would support the recommendation to be approved. Okay. Uh, any input from the Ways and Means Committee who did spend a lot of time on this?
Couple of things I'd like to just bring up on that. Uh, first of all, was discussed, this really all goes back to one particular number, which is the maximum assessment on a home, which at this time is uh, fifty-seven hundred dollars. So everything is scaled off that number, which is a number that the city has put into their fee structure. So their fee structure, so it is a number that will be looked at on an annual basis. So if it does need to be adjusted, we have the means of doing that adjustment. The other thing I want to bring up that was also part of the topic of conversation, Ways and Means, but we basically came to the conclusion that we were not going to make a change in it at this point, and that was the participation, a change in the participation of how the city pays for portions or whatever of a sidewalk. And that's one thing that we did leave out at this point, and if there's any need for future discussion on that. Kind of the last item in there, another number, as Dennis Simpson mentioned, there's a lot of calculations involved in here. There are some numbers pertaining to large frontage lots, lots that either take up several traditional lot sizes or happen to be on corners or whatever, that we do have an additional number in there, which is the, kind of puts a maximum on what that charge would be for a maximum frontage based in part of the calculation. And again, that's a number that, as we discussed, would be part of the annual review as far as where each of these are going. Probably the very last item, as always, there are some conditions that engineering may come back to the city council and request either a waiver or a change on an assessment based on their evaluation. And again, we wanted to leave that, so that is maybe a recommendation from the engineering, but it comes back to the council to actually make that change. And we did not want to put that burden onto engineering that the final decision-making would come back to the council.
Thank you, John. Other input, other questions from the council? Glenn, any comment you want to make, you put a lot of time in on this.
I just said, I wanted to add that, you know, Jason has it here in the memo here that it's important for the engineering staff to have information available to property owners ahead of time so that they have a good idea as to what the assessments are going to be on their property. And by having this assessment policy, the engineering staff can provide that information ahead of time to property owners, and I think that's important for property owners. I don't know if you want to mention more about that or not, Jason?
Yeah, thanks, Councilman. That's a really big driver here, too, is being able to go to public informational meetings in the fall before we even really dive into design work and be able to talk to property owners about what this might cost them. Or if a property owner sees the capital improvement plan on our website, which I think is up now, and if it's not, it's going to be soon, but you're going to be able to see, hey, my street's on there, I got to call somebody, and what do you always want to know? You want to know what this is going to cost me. So it really helps us make people more prepared for what's coming their way as we enter into one of our street reconstruction projects in front of their property. It's really helpful. And I, thanks for expounding on some of this information, Councilman De Kramer. I was probably a little brief in my presentation, but I'm always hesitant on how much time we want to spend on it, because there's quite a lot here. But one thing that you pointed out I really should have is that the fifty-seven hundred dollar residential maximum can be increased in this policy if there's large frontage, and the purpose for that is you see a lot of two and three lot properties where they're buying multiple lots and combining them into one, and we just see that as they are deriving more benefit from that street than just a smaller property, is because they've got so much frontage that it could be split back into multiple properties. So that was a pretty big change, so thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you. Other questions, other input? If not, you do have the recommendation, what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the resolution as the changes as presented.
Motion by John, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Glenn, discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I just have one question and one comment. First of all, I think the committee members know that I'm opposed to the driveway recommendation. I firmly believe that we should go to the fifty-fifty, continue with the fifty-fifty split. I think Jason knows that as well. My second, my question is, if we approve this tonight, on page one fifty-six, it says the current policy is fifty-seven hundred for parcel in 2020, and it says six thousand dollars parcel fall 2021. Are we approving that increase now? That's all I have on here.
Jason, that's anticipating the, or dependent on the fee structure, correct?
Yeah, you know, I think that we would not be approving that now, but I think the staff is prepared to propose that with the next fee schedule, and that's something we really like the council to consider when we bring the fee resolution forward.
Jason?
Yes.
I did print out the policy itself, and I think that that page that you're looking at right there, that's not officially a part of the policy, is it?
No, it is not. I'm just looking at it now as well. That was a document that was put together as kind of a, maybe simpler to read summary with a couple examples of how the policy would work. A lot of the language is pulled directly from the policy, but there's some extras in there, so that is not in the policy. Thanks for that clarification.
And so we're not approving that page at all today?
No.
Right, thank you.
Okay, other discussion on the motion? If there is no other discussion, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Jason. We'll move then to agenda number nineteen, consider the resolution adopting the tax levy for 2021, and then agenda number twenty is a resolution adopting the budget for 2021, and we'll discuss both at the same time. Sorry. Oh, agenda number eighteen. Agenda number eighteen is to reaffirm the commercial tax abatement guidance policy, Sharon?
Yes, this is almost an identical memo to what was presented last year at this nearly the same time. And at that time, there was a request to allow applications to be received after construction. We had some applications for tax abatement that did occur after construction, and the council and EDA wanted to follow the policy or maybe do some type of penalty. But after further review in 2019, the council voted to allow abatements after construction. So in 2020, we had a year of us allowing commercial tax abatement applications after construction, partly maybe due to the pandemic, partly maybe due to this still being a new policy. We do have two current applications that you have not seen yet, but they are as well following construction. They did not occur prior to construction. So in 2020, they would meet the council's wishes, which they would be able to still apply. In 2021, we would just need, you know, guidance from the council. Do you want to continue accepting abatements after construction? I do think 2020 was a, wasn't, well, I know it was an abnormal year, and possibly, again, maybe the word wasn't out, or construction maybe wasn't where it needed to be in terms of commercial. So the request before you is to extend one more year, the acceptance of commercial tax abatements after construction, if that would be the case. We have had some before, of course, but this allows some latitude and some ability for the city to work with business owners who, most of the time, some of the time, rather, they might be existing business owners, business development in town. So it's a good partnership, and it does give the EDA an additional tool. So that is a request before council. The EDA board did take this up as well, I might add, at their December board meeting, and they did support a recommendation to the council that the commercial tax abatement leverage or leeway in providing or accepting applications after construction be extended until the end of 2021.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Open up for questions about this recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have a question, I do have a comment, though.
Yes, Craig.
I support doing this. I think, you know, as we've discussed in the past, all things being equal or normal, I appreciate the fact that we want people to apply ahead of time and plan through that, but just with all the other things going on and the additional stresses for business because of the new way we're trying to conduct and live with COVID and the other pressures, this is a tool that I believe we've used to encourage and endorse expanding and improving the properties, which also then expands our tax base, which we know is, you know, obviously the lifeblood that we live on. So I really support this, and I think it's a good tool, and I think it helps people. I think we don't pick losers with this. I think we pick winners kind of across the board, so I think it's a pretty nice tool to use, and I really support it.
Thank you, Craig. Any other input or questions from the council?
I have a question. Is the problem that the businesses don't know about the abatement program, or is it that they don't know about the deadline that they're supposed to apply ahead of time?
I would say that it's a combination of not knowing about the program or policy, and in addition, the wishes or desire to get through the construction project first and then consider the abatement afterwards might be more of a preference. And I know for one upcoming tax abatement, again, they did contact us after construction, but before the end of this year. I mean, I sat down with that business owner for about an hour to go over the policy, and we still did not receive a formal application until after the construction was complete. So I think, you know, their day-to-day busyness, so to speak, and then lack of knowledge, I think contributes to some delay.
What is the EDA or the city doing to inform these businesses? Are we mailing them information, or how are we providing them with this information?
Well, the ideal situation would be that when they come in for a building permit, they are given this information. We sometimes do not get building permits until the very, very, very end, and in some cases, they may be asking other questions and not looking at construction. So the ideal situation is to try to get them the information when they're applying for a building permit, but that might not be until the very end. And in some cases, it might be, you know, maybe there's been part of the construction that started, and we weren't made aware.
I'm wondering if there's going to be this forgiveness of the penalty in the next year or so. Is this going to be a permanent thing, where there's always going to be a reason where they don't apply in time and don't meet the guidelines? Should the city look at amending the policy and changing the requirement that they apply ahead of time?
That may be a consideration that we'd want to consider next year, because I think, Glenn, your point is correct, that the end goal is for business expansion that's going to increase the tax base and increase employment in the community, and the timing of that application maybe isn't, is more of an administrative function of the city at a time when probably that business is so focused on not only maintaining their business, but also planning that expansion, that this is like, you know, one detail that gets pushed off, but it's an important program at the end of the day, but really, they see the benefit of this well after the project is completed, like a year after the project is completed.
Other input?
I think the main reason for bringing this forward again is because 2020 was not a normal year. I think if we could have stated we had a normal year, I don't, I'm not convinced we would be bringing this back. You know, one of the concerns we may have in 2020 is, or 2021, rather, is just, you know, what is the business climate going to be? What are we looking at for tax capacity evaluations? That's really concerning to us. So on one side, in one view, you could say, you know, let's be conservative here and stick with the original policy. The other side is, well, this may be another case where you want to offer some latitude. So by no means am I strongly urging or forcing the council to take, to renew this, but I think, I think, again, because the year was not normal, that's really the main reason to bring this back and have it extend one more year.
I think it'd be good to extend it, and we talked about small business owners, which I happen to be one of. There's a lot of weeks, we're working sixty, seventy hours a week, and yes, it should be a top priority when you do a remodel or something on your business. It's not. A lot of times, we're just working sixty-seven hours a week to keep our businesses going. So, and not able to go to City Hall and get your building permit, that also takes that step off. So I think extending this is going to help out businesses and help out those small business owners that are working long days to make their business work.
Other input?
Yeah, from, this is Dr. Meister, Mr. Mayor. Speaking from the EDA committee, we, Mr. Schaefer kind of hit it right on. We are looking to grow businesses. We understand that, as Sharon said, 2020 was an abnormal year under any circumstances, and a lot of discernment went into this, and this is why we brought it forward and approved it.
I would make a motion to approve the resolution as read.
Motion by Jim, is there a second?
I'd second that, Mayor.
Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcoller?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Lazzinski?
Yes.
The motion passes. Now we'll move to agenda number twenty, just be consider the resolution adopting a tax levy from 2024, 2021. As I mentioned earlier, the following agenda item is the adopted budget for 2021. Been a substantial amount of work that has gone into not only the proposed levy, but also the budget for 2021, work that the council has been involved in numerous meetings, but also work that's
but also work that staff has done, done a lot of due diligence, a lot of detailed work and, uh, with the goal of having a, a budget that would serve the city adequately, but also, um, have, keep the spending level and the tax levy at a, as low as possible. So with that, I'll turn to Sharon and Sharon did present this, that the truth and taxation meeting, uh, and then since that time, the proposed levy has been reduced from that point. Sharon?
Mr. Mayor and council, you do have before you, uh, two resolutions and I believe the, um, complete copy of the five-year capital improvement plan. The first action would be to adopt the 2021 tax levy. If you noted in your handouts, uh, this is an increase from 2020, uh, and the percentage increase is 2.8%. The actual dollar increase in the levy is, uh, 197, 894, so 197, 894. This is, um, a slight reduction from the truth and taxation. Staff did do some additional work to get it to 2.8. If you also recall, at the truth and taxation, we did present the impacts on the average taxpayer. So for the average homeowner, this 2.8 will equate to a $10 per year increase and for the average commercial property owner, uh, a range of $35 to $75 increase from 2020 to 2021. And, um, I know that the finance staff and all of our division directors put a lot of effort into this. We did get really good feedback and input from the council. We are also appreciative of, um, really the team, teamwork that went into this. And that storm is also on the, on the meeting tonight as well. And I don't know, she can add in any comments she wants, she may want to add more comments in when we adopt, uh, the budget, but, uh, our request is to adopt the 2021 levy as presented in the resolution.
Are there questions about the proposed 2021 levy?
I move we approve the resolution adopting the 2021 tax levy at $7,254,700.
Motion by Craig, is there a second to that motion?
I will second.
Seconded by John, discussion on that motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Wazinski?
No.
Motion does pass four to three. We'll move then to the next, the agenda item, which is the budget that is supported by that levy. Additional questions about the proposed 2021?
If not, I would entertain a motion.
I, uh, move the resolution adopting the budget as proposed for 2021.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote.
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Wazinski?
No.
And the motion does pass at a four to three vote. We'll move then to agenda number 21, uh, consider the approval of the five-year capital improvement plan. Sharon, I'll turn to you first.
Likewise, um, with the levy and budget, we had a lot of input from division directors, uh, staff, finance department did a lot of work on this and really good feedback from the city council. This is a, um, a five-year projection or plan in terms of capital equipment and also our, our major projects, building projects and street reconstruction. The one thing I will add, uh, it is a plan and, uh, per purchasing policy, state statutes, uh, other requirements that may be in place. I believe that, um, virtually all the, almost all of the items in the capital improvement plan will have a secondary review and a secondary approval when purchases or construction-type projects are, uh, brought forward for consideration. But this does set forth, um, um, what our plans are. I anticipate, uh, for, for equipment that we will meet shortly after the beginning of 2021 to, um, start talking about, um, where we're at. And I know that we have some uncertainty financially, but we will want to get a head start on that. If you recall, I'll just give you an example, um, just on how long it takes, we, I believe, ordered police vehicles in the spring of 2021, 2020, and, uh, we actually just recently received those police vehicles. So time is kind of of the essence. And then of course, as most of you know too, there's a desire for street reconstruction and, and, um, providing a little bit, uh, hurried up schedule on that in the hopes of maybe, um, helping with some competitive bidding and so forth. So, uh, this is, um, what staff and, and some committee work is proposed for the 2021, 2025 capital improvement plan. It is a living document, it changes quite a bit, um, as we get farther out, as most of you would notice, uh, a lot of the time we're, we're really moving them farther and farther back, but, um, this is, uh, what we have proposed for approval tonight on the five-year capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Sharon. Open up for questions, input. I realize the council has reviewed this previously at a work session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments on this if I could. So I know that, you know, setting the budget, setting the levy, it's always a tough time. It's, it's, it, we can get some public heat, we get public support. There's was a lot of energy, a lot of effort put in by city staff, department heads, um, you know, there was a lot of cuts made in, in equipment, uh, the capital improvement plan, the P I and T. There's been a lot of discussion about what's the right street size when we redo our streets. There's a lot of pressure to stay big instead of go small. It's kind of funny to me that some of that pressure to go big and, or stay big instead of going small is the same people that vote against the budget stuff. So I just hope that we keep that in mind as we do this. This is a really tough balancing act. I would like nothing better than to put forth a 2% or less levy increase, but I also need to be realistic about what we do for the city. So just wanted to make that statement as we move forward, to think about all the picture on that.
Okay, thank you, Craig. On the, uh, you pointed out also the five-year capital improvement plan, as Sharon used to, is a more of a roadmap, more of a plan, more of a, uh, um, to be thoughtful about some of those larger expenditures that, you know, it should be planned for, that might occur two years or three years or four years down the road. So as well as, uh, what is in the current budget, uh, for 2021. So, so it is a, I, in my view, it is a good tool, a good planning tool. And as Sharon pointed out, it's not the authorization to make the purchase, that of course comes back to the council on the individual actions, but it's more of a, a kind of overarching roadmap on how capital improvement is going to be funded. Other input from the council? If not, the recommendation is the approval of the five-year capital improvement plan. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make a move.
To approve and adopt the five-year capital plan. Motion by John, and by Craig, discussion on that motion? If there's no discussion, uh, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
No.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 22, consider the approval of the memorandum of understanding for the appointment of the city attorney. The, uh, uh, city charter, uh, does state that the, the mayor, uh, makes a recommendation to the council, uh, every two years on the appointment of the city attorney. Uh, both Sharon and I have met prior to this time with, uh, with Dennis Simpson, uh, talked about the, the work that's necessary in the city and the work that, uh, both in the civil as well as the prosecution, um, as well as the, um, work that has been done for the past many years by not only Dennis, but also his, his firm. So it's my recommendation that the, uh, um, that Dennis Simpson and his firm be appointed, uh, city attorney, uh, for 2021, 2022. And the council, I would note that also has a memorandum from, in their packet, uh, that they've received or they have received a memorandum from Dennis Simpson outlining his interest in continuing as well as his, um, his desire to keep his rate of compensation at unchanged for 2021 and 2022 as compared to 2021 as compared to the current year. So Sharon, do you have anything you want to add? Then I'll ask Dennis.
I, I just want to add, two years ago, we, um, kind of outlined, uh, budget services, um, hourly services, so somewhat of a factor retainer and those outside the retainer. And I think from, um, 19 and 20, we've, um, I think it's been a really good partnership in terms of, um, what's covered and what's not, and, and we've actually seen, um, some, just a reduction overall and, um, kind of outside legal services costs. So it's been, uh, I think it's been worked really well and, and I believe that what's in your packet is, is, is the same from 2018 and 2019, carrying forward that same language. That's all I wanted to add, Mr. Mayor.
And I would add one other item that, um, you know, I, and I know Sharon has all, also independently, um, you know, looked at, uh, what other cities are doing and there's, uh, there's a variety of different, um, uh, ways that cities address their, um, um, representation, their legal representation. Some are, uh, have an in-house attorney, some have a contracted attorney that might be out of the area, some split the prosecution and the civil work and then contract each of those separately. In some cases, the county is involved in, in, uh, a portion of that work, specifically the prosecution. And as I reviewed that, um, the, what we have here probably is the most efficient, certainly the, uh, uh, now that we're making the entire decision on legal representation based on cost, but this certainly is, uh, more cost-effective than most of the communities I have looked at that have, um, different, um, different strategies and different mechanisms. With that, Dennis, do you want to make any comments? No, I certainly just appreciate the, the reappointment and where the, the recommendation of the council for the reappointment and I believe it has been a good working relationship from my office with the city for a number of years and I would like to continue that relationship. Thank you. Any input from the council? Not have entertained a motion, uh, for the approval of the appointment at memorandum of, uh, understanding with the, uh, city attorney for legal services.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you. We'll move then to agenda number 23, consider appointments of various boards and commissions, bureaus and authorities, that of course, as the council is well aware, we, uh, because of the, uh, the current pandemic, we're unable to, uh, conduct, uh, in-person interviews as we have previously done. We hope to get back to that, um, in the future. But we do have two openings on the library board and this would be my recommendation that Eric DeGroot be, um, appointed to a, a second term that will expire December 31st, 2023, and that Anita Goll be appointed to her first term, um, and that term, which is a partial term, will expire, uh, December 31st, 2021. I would offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Steve Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number 24, the, um, this is a recognition of, uh, for Glenn Bearcooler, who is, this is his final meeting, um, again, we're not in person, so, um, we did, uh, present, I did present Glenn a, um, a plaque recognizing his, uh, eight years of service on the Marshall City Council and also, uh, thank him for his dedication, um, to the city. Glenn is a person who has always come prepared, always goes through detail. Tonight was another example when we discussed the special assessment policy where he did a extensive amount of, uh, calculations and deliberations and, um, kind of, um, it allowed trial balances of how various options would work out. So, so Glenn, we do thank you for your service on the Marshall City Council. Open up for any other comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Steve?
I appreciate Glenn's thoroughness and, um, certainly intense scrutiny of all the, uh, work that goes on with the city. I appreciate that he doesn't always have an opinion that, uh, is in agreement and, um, but I appreciate his thoughtfulness and care, um, and appreciate that he is willing to stick his neck out and, and vote his conscience. So I appreciate him and will miss him.
Any other input?
Yeah, I just want to speak up and, and ditto with what, uh, Councilman Meister said. Glenn, it's, it's been, uh, it's been an education and an honor to serve with you and thank you, and I know the city of Marshall thanks you for your eight years.
Thank you, Craig. Any other comments?
Just a little difficult, but I think a round of applause would be good.
Yep. And Glenn, I turn to you if you want to say anything and if you don't, that's fine too. But I will ask you to take, take your, go off on you here. Maybe.
I think I'll wait and, and when it's my time for comment for, uh, items later on, I'll, I'll say something. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Glenn. So we will move then to, uh, councilmate, uh, to commission board liaison reports. Uh, from my standpoint, the, uh, regional development commission did meet, uh, for the last meeting of the year and the, uh, and as I've kind of reported, a major activity is the revolving loan fund, um, and the, which is actually two revolving loan funds. One is, uh, uh, for COVID-impacted, um, businesses and where there was a federal EDA grant and then the traditional revolving loan fund, which has been in place since the flooding in southwest Minnesota following the 1993 floods. So the, um, so that's a major focus of the regional development commission right now and the revolving loan fund, um, which I chair, um, did also meet this past Friday and approved several more loans. So the original $1.48 million that was received in June for COVID-related revolving loan fund, there's approximately $540,000 that would be available to be red lent with the goal of really... available to be relent with the goal of really getting that money um lent out to businesses that are in need. And we're well on the way of getting that done by May of twenty twenty-one. With that, um um we'll move to your end, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing to report.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My community services advisory board did meet, but I had a work obligation, so was unable to attend that. Um cable commission did not meet, economic development authority did meet, and we've already acted on uh the majority of what that meeting was about.
Okay, thank you. John?
Uh, really, the only thing to report on uh would be MMU's meeting. Uh, some note of interest, Missouri River uh has moved to a time of use wholesale rate that will begin in twenty twenty-three. So basically, the cost of electrical uh energy will be dependent on the time of day that uh you're using that power. So that gives us about two years. Uh technically, MMU is very well suited for that right now with the completion of their new meter system. But a lot of education that needs to go on with the the public. Um along with that, uh Missouri River also uh proved to do to unanimously to purchase the eighty acres uh that was originally intended for a gas generation site and plans to build the uh ten to twelve megawatt uh solar farm um sometime in twenty twenty-two. Last item is uh the MMU Commission uh voted to pass through a uh additional tier four of uh Missouri River's economic development uh rate. So there's particular new customer coming in. Uh Missouri River does offer a discounted rate for up to four years. And uh it's a pass-through by MMU, so it does not cost the local utility anything to do that, but the cost that's um borne by uh Missouri River. So I did uh get some of that information over to our EDA director. So talking with really heavier loads um is what it's intended for. Uh um, you know, thousand kilowatt hours and greater uh would be the where this really comes into play.
Okay. Thank you, John. Russ?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the library board met and is one of the few libraries in the state of Minnesota that remained open during this COVID crisis. Uh, they continue to make deliveries, again with no contact deliveries to Marshall, Cotwood, and Ballaton, plus the elderly facility. So they they've seen an increase in that. They've also received a lot of positive comments about the installation and usage of their drive-up window. So for those people that might be listening in the public that not aware that the library now has a drive-up window, they do have that. So please take usage of that. Also, on a on a personal note, Luanne Anderson announced her retirement. She's been an employee of the library for forty-plus years, so we congratulate her on her upcoming retirement, which will take place during the first half of twenty twenty-one. Police advisory met, board met last week and conducted interviews for the open position of detectives. And I believe our recommendations will be forwarded or Jim will conduct to further interviews with them and then go back before uh city. CVB had a meeting. We approved the twenty twenty-one budget, and one of the board members brought up uh the mural that is located on the Varsity Pub. She was wondering what can be done and on it. And we know, we all know it's fading. Uh, I think Councilman Dee Kramer has brought up a couple of different times that we do have another mural of that same thing. But I think we all probably feel that we, if we put it back in the same location, something has to be done to stop the fading. And and one of the board members asked if there was something that could be put on the uh mural if we did put it back there to stop the fading. And so I told her we, the city is well aware of it, and uh we continue to work on it, and we'll just keep everybody abreast. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Russ. Um Craig, not put you on the spot, but I think the amateur sports commission is also had discussion on that mural. I think you're muted, Greg.
Glenn, I got your button again, doggone it. So yeah, we we've talked about it, too, and and kind of the same same place Ross is at with it. It's just they're trying to figure out the the best way to try to, you know, protect it and preserve it. And and I haven't really heard anything about it now for a couple of months.
Okay. With that, uh, we'll move to Jim.
Um, my committees did not meet. Um, but I do have an update on city hall. We we meet all the time at the city hall committee, and I know the public is very interested in city hall. Inside city hall is going very well. Uh Sharon and I walked through it last week with Nate, the um job soup there. Uh she rockings down in the basement. They're on this, the main floor. The um exterior, which was supposed to be on by Christmas, but it must not got here. They're starting that next week. The brick will be going on. You'll see temporary shelters going around the city hall for heat because we got to heat the brick or heat the mortars. So the brick sets up. And then the nichi panels will go on the walls. So hopefully by the end of January, if the weather stays decent, um, the exterior will be looking very sharp. So we do not have the final numbers yet on PR four. I know we've been talking about that for three or four months. Um Ilya and Ray keep pushing back on them for pricing and and other things, so we can get that down as low as we can. Hopefully, middle of January, end of January, we'll have that, so we can finalize that. So but city hall is on track. I think they said they're only one or two weeks behind schedule, even with removal of the hotel. So hopefully, when the pandemic's done, we'll be able to meet for our first meeting in the new city hall.
Good. Thank you, Jim. We'll move then to uh council member individual item. Jim, let's start on your end.
I don't have that much. I would just like to, I know this summer, we had a lot of discussions, citizens saying roads get narrow in the winter. And I bring that up because, well, I think we're going to get a snowstorm tomorrow. Let's, and to the citizens out there, the the ones listening, help out our city staff by moving your cars so we can plow the roads, and they will keep your roads wider if your cars are not in the way when they plow. Other than that, the only thing I have is happy holidays. Everybody be safe over the holidays.
Thank you, Jim. Russ?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I think Councilman Meister and I, well, I know Councilman Meister and I were contacted regarding a situation out on Floyd Wild Drive by the resident out there. And I just want to compliment uh Ilya and Jason for for not only, I think Ilya's been out there two, three times. I've been out there a couple of times and and trying to address the issues that the uh the people have brought up. And I think it's going to be an ongoing thing. And hopefully uh probably won't be able to get fixed this winter, but maybe by next spring, we can get some resolution to the homeowners' concerns. That's I, other than what Jim said, I'd like to echo uh happy holidays to everyone. Please stay safe and and enjoy the new year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
John?
Uh, the only two things I've got is Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and uh just again uh for my cohort in Ward One, uh Glenn, thank you for your service.
We'll move then to Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, I just want to echo Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays. Um, and just everybody be safe. And and uh let's hope that twenty twenty-one brings us a lot more positive change and positive surprises than we've had in twenty twenty. But thank God we're all here.
Steve?
Yeah, so I uh reflect what Councilmember LaBatt said with the situation on Floyd Wild Drive. Um, I think that this is a lesson for us to really consider um these uh when we have a new situation, we have to consider the what-ifs. Um, so that'll be the lesson that I've learned. Um, the other thing that came to me with a constituent was something that actually happened at Independence Park um at the pond there. Uh, and apparently, we have a regulation and an ordinance that nobody should fish unless they are under thirteen. And I'm thinking that we probably need to look at that. Um, why, why do we have that age limit there? I think that bringing it up to fishing license age of sixteen would be more appropriate than thirteen because a fourteen-year-old was uh called off and and the police were called because there's a fourteen-year-old out there fishing. And I think that's kind of ridiculous and a waste of time when we've got real crime. And if there, if it's meant to be for kids that are fishing, let's make it so that if a kid, uh my opinion would be if a kid doesn't need a license, he doesn't need to be worried about fishing there. And that's sixteen for a license. So that would be my recommendation to Preston and city staff to look into that a little bit. Um, otherwise, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Let's everybody have a peaceful holiday season and be careful, be safe, wear your mask, wash your hands, and stay home if you're sick.
Thank you, Dr. Meister. And Glenn?
Um, I apologize for my voice. I I've got a sore throat, so I it sounds kind of harsh. So I'm sorry about that. Anyway, I I'd like to just take a few moments to make a few brief comments. First of all, I I've really enjoyed having the opportunity to work with city employees these past year, eight years. Now, based on my observation, city employees take a lot of pride in the work that they do. And the city is fortunate to have such qualified and and caring employees. And I really appreciate the work that they do. Uh, one of the things that I I appreciate the most while serving on the council is that we have good, honest debates of the various issues that come before us. Council members do not just vote yes on every agenda item. And we've certainly seen some of that tonight. And I think that's healthy for a governing body. Uh, in the city of Marshall, our citizens do not all have the same opinions on various issues. Just as we have diversity of opinions in our community, it makes sense that there should also be diversity of opinions on the city council. During my eight years on the council, every council member has on occasion voted no when they believe that it's the right thing to do. The nice thing is that even though we have healthy debates and disagreements during the meeting, at the end of the meeting, we all go home on friendly terms. That that's important, and that's, I I really appreciate that. And I hope that this practice will continue in the future. I want to thank Mayor Burns for the way he conducts our meetings. He always treats every council member and every member of our community in a very fair and respectful manner. And he's to be commended for that. And finally, I want to thank the citizens of Ward One for giving me the opportunity to serve them these past eight years. Been an honor and a privilege serving them as one of their council members. Thank you, and uh Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Glenn. You've you've served the city well. So thanks. Let's give Glenn another round of applause. I just have one thing. Um, you know, one of the functions is um, actually, I have two things. The uh is appointments to boards and uh commissions from the city council who serve as liaison. So um if um I received most of the input from the council members, but if you haven't re uh sent it to me, um, you know, please do so. I want to make those appointments at our first meeting in January. Also, at our first meeting in January, one of the things that we'll need to discuss, and of course, that's an organizational time, uh, the uh city charter commission. Um, the member appointment actually goes through a different process where the appointment is actually made by the district court judge. Um, nominations in the past have come from individual council members who have brought forth a name, and then that name, it would be forwarded then to the district court judge who at some point. So what I'd like the council, as well as incoming council member, John Ed Blum, who's in attendance here, uh, to think about, uh, and then will um act on this in January, is a name of a person from your ward that you would like to nominate uh to represent uh the city on the charter commission. We have seven openings um that will be coming open. So there's exactly enough. It always works out. Everything works out. So um so if each council member thinks about a name for an appointment to the to the um city charter commission as a recommendation to the district court judge. Again, we'll have more discussion on that uh in January at our meetings. With that, I'll move us along then to the remaining items on the on the agenda this evening. We have the information items as well as the listing of the upcoming meetings for your review. Is there anything else to come forward this evening?
We got a new city administrator.
Oh, I I skipped that. Skip by staff reports.
Whatever you want to do.
So let me back up. Uh, staff reports. Now, that's the second time I haven't followed the agenda this evening. So uh we'll have staff reports, starting with Sharon, city administrator.
Mr. Mayor, just very briefly, uh, we have had uh good interest in the resiliency EDA grant program that the city council allowed EDA to um to get out. We did actually have requests from outside the city of Marshall. So this is an indication that there is great need from our affected businesses in the latest governor's order. We uh are in contact with the county who uh soon will be implementing an EDA grant program as well for the nearly half million dollars that they will be able to distribute to businesses and will promote that in addition. And even though two thousand is a very small amount, and for some of our businesses and their monthly expenses, one business owner did indicate today that every little bit helps. And I was very appreciative of the city um doing something in addition to what the state may provide or the county may provide. So I wanted to give the council feedback uh on the work that you did most recently. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sharon. Any questions for Sharon? The um uh with that, Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things on the engineering side. We're currently working uh with RT Vision, which is a company that we uh track our contracts with. We use them to, it's the software we use to track our project quantities and pay applications. Um, but we're working with them to set up electronic bidding for our construction projects. So we're pretty excited about that. Um, that's something that at least one contractor has been asking for for a couple of years. But um it's it's a really nice system where the contractor gets to enter all their numbers, submit their bid electronically. It stays in a secure vault until the bid opening time in which, at which time we get the key to open it and pull out the bids. Uh, we think we're really excited about it. It should work well. Um, one thing that'll be different with this system, though, um, we are at this point proposing that the contractors help us pay for the system by paying twenty-five dollars at the time of bid for their bid key to submit the electronic bid. So they'll add a little cost to the process, but we think that that cost is minor compared to the level of convenience that it offers the contractors. So we're pretty excited about that setup. Um, working on our project designs for our two assessment projects next year on James and Camden and on the North First neighborhood. Um, making a lot of progress and still really feel like we're on track to be awarding projects in February. Um, we were targeting January, but things kind of have a way of getting pushed back when you're when you're going through the process. But um still well, well ahead of schedule, and we feel really good about our process and our timeline. We'll be reaching out to the golf course and to a property owner on the North First Street project for some easements, but working through that. Um, on the building side, the building department is still working with RT Vision also on the new uh permit software. And once we finally get that into place, the contractors will be able to submit their permits uh online in a more functional manner. So we're we're working through that and hopefully, hopefully, still in the first quarter in twenty twenty-one, we'll be able to roll that out. Um, lastly, at uh the November fourth planning commission meeting, uh, the city hall project was brought before the planning commission meeting or for the planning commission to discuss exterior siding materials that weren't compliant with the heritage district uh ordinance and construction standards. Um, the planning commission did agree to um allow the material at that meeting, but it was brought up by one of the members that maybe we should be reviewing this ordinance, uh, referring to the heritage district ordinance. Um, and I just wanted to mention that to the council, that that there was a request to review it and have the Marshall Downtown Business Owners or Business Association meet and discuss that ordinance and and the provisions within it. Um, they invited us to a meeting on January sixth, and I will be attending that meeting to talk about the ordinance, gather some gather some input, and I believe the mayor will plan to attend as well to, um, provide some perspective. But I wanted to just let the council weigh in. If, if anybody has any thoughts on that ordinance section, I'm not sure how familiar you are with it, but, um, it, it just requires specific colors and materials to maintain the traditional character of downtown. And in the event that you're going to put forward a material or a color that's not within that ordinance, you need to come to the planning commission and have it reviewed and approved or denied. There's a no, there's no cost for that process. So if the council has any input before we go to that meeting, I'd be happy to take it. Um, otherwise, um, I can report back how that goes.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Any input from the council at this time for Jason on that issue?
Uh, if I remember correctly, that ordinance was pushed by the downtown businesses at the time it was created, correct? I believe I'm correct in saying that.
Yeah, I think, uh, Jim, the, uh, there's a bit of history, as you're probably well aware, on that ordinance. There's a couple of things that came together, maybe more than a couple of things. One was the, um, um, Small Cities Development Grant that, you know, helped with some improvements to, to, to downtown businesses, and there is some concerns about how that investment, uh, since it did involve a public investment, how that would be, uh, utilized. And then, of course, the Main Street project, uh, was going through, and that also kind of prompted some additional, um, consideration, given that downtown properties are different. They're in a different zone. There are no setbacks property has provided, and they, um, have a neighbor immediately adjacent to them, in fact, touching many of the properties. So what one property owner does probably has some impact on others. And then prior to that, there was probably some concerns, uh, that came forward about some properties from some of the downtown businesses, uh, that were concerned about some properties that, um, that were doing things like covering up windows with tin and, you know, doing things that perhaps were, um, not only unsightly for their property, but, but was reflecting on the neighboring properties in the total downtown district. So I think that Jim probably is what you're referring to, is some of the history on that, why the downtown business owners initially brought that forward. But I think Jason is also correct in that, you know, it is a process that, um, you know, gets reviewed and, um, and, you know, in many cases, in fact, probably in all cases, by the time it gets to that, the, uh, the, whatever the project is, has been, you know, pretty well thought through. So it isn't like someone is bringing something forward that is totally out of line. In, in most cases, it's probably more of a, a building material that is new and perhaps wasn't identified in, uh, the previous, um, consideration.
Thank you, Bob. You're correct. I, I do recall that. I do know in my time on planning zoning, we did have some pretty bright paint colors on some buildings that did get turned down. So, cause I, I know, and I, we don't want to have, I don't necessarily think we, I mean, it's, we make that decision later, but we don't want a pink building in downtown Marshall. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Okay. Any other input? Otherwise, we'll, Dennis?
Thank you. Thank you again, council, for the reappointment and confidence shown and the service provided. Happy, happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. So, uh, with that, um, you also have the remaining items, the information items, the upcoming meetings. Is there any other item to come forward at this meeting?
I make the motion re-adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Glenn to adjourn this meeting, uh, discussion on this motion. At, uh, by voice, vote, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Merry Christmas.